I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored and tenured flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item number two is invocation. For that Pastor Shawn Reed. From the Crossroads Church. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I am Pastor Shawn Reed's wife, Lynette, and I count it a privilege to do this again. Let's pray. God, we thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity to come together as a body, as one, to be able to lead this wonderful city, God, the people. And we pray, Father, that you will guide our hearts and our minds, lead us in wisdom and insight and in understanding in every area on tonight's agenda. We pray, Father, that we are led by your wisdom. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you very much. Item three is audience participation. It's covered on the screen. Please silence your cell phones, devices, whatever you have, and enjoy this meeting. I'd like to welcome any folks watching online at home. I hope there are some. Please let us know. Item number four is the consent agenda. A is action regarding minutes of January 15th. B, action regarding resolution 2019-01 supporting city forward ordinance, skin game municipal setting designation for 2417 East Long. C is action regarding a proposed sanitary sewer pipeline crossing agreement with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. D, action regarding authorization of individual project order with Kimley Horn and Associates for the Saginaw Park Site Analysis and Conceptual Design. E, action regarding election of cities representative on the Metropolitan Area Emergency Services Authority Board of Directors. We're going to pull item F. We'll discuss that separately. So we are considering it as item A through E only. Any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A through E as presented.
I'll second.
Father's second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? There is none. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum and a full house tonight. So item F, action regarding agreement to provide professional services related to building inspectors, and City Manager Gabe Ray.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to extend congratulations to Kevin McMillan, who, as of the end of last month, January, has happily retired. So Kevin's in the audience. He took a brief retirement and would like to come back and work as a contract building inspector. So we're thankful to entertain his services. So if you'll recall, back in our FY19 budget discussions, we had talked about a new rental inspection program, which, thanks to Kevin McMillan and Larry Little, they have trained other building inspectors to step up and fill new roles. The contract before you this evening is to retain Kevin as a building inspector while we get through our residential building boom. You know, we're building 200 to 300 houses within the next year plus, mostly on the east side of town, but also Willow Vista Phase III, close to where we're at. So the contract before you this evening is to keep Kevin as contract building inspector, and then when things slow down, we'll retain all our inspections in-house.
And we're adding a duration to that?
So the current contract, as it's written, requires a 30-day termination notice, so any party can say, 30 days' notice, we're, you know, not moving forward. If the council desires a term, that's fine. We may bring it back for your review in a year, depending on our, most of our residential construction activity.
Any questions on this item?
I do.
Valerie?
I think we need to put a year term on it and then come back and...
We got an amendment?
Yeah, just City Attorney.
Sure. This can be approved, subject to the addition of a finite term of 12 months.
Then if no discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve this item as we discussed with the 12-month term on it. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mary. Second?
Second.
David? All in favor? All opposed? Honor. Thank you. All right. Let me get my... Item number five, presentation of comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended September 30, 2018. We got our friends from Weaver and Tidwell. Welcome.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Jennifer Ripka, and I'm the partner on the external audit, and I'm here to present the results for fiscal year ended September 30th, 2018. Each of you should have a copy of the comprehensive annual financial report. Within this document is several things, one including the independent auditor's report. The independent auditor's report goes through management's responsibility. Management's responsibility is for the preparation and the fair presentation of these financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Our responsibility as the auditors is to perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and express an opinion on these financial statements. We've completed our audit, and we've issued an unmodified opinion. This is a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that can be placed on a set of financial statements. Also within this document is management's discussion and analysis. This is what I would consider to be the Cliff Notes version of this document. It includes not only the government-wide information, but also a breakdown of the information at the fund level. So each one of the funds and the legally adopted budget information is also included within this document as audited. So I wanted to point out a few things, first being that the city's net position for fiscal year ended September 30th, 2018, was almost $108 million. That is an increase of $5.6 million. Within that net position is going to be not only the net investment in capital assets, but also restricted items, which is for debt, service, capital projects, et cetera, but also an unrestricted net position as well. Within the financial statements, you'll note that there's the statement of net position, which is the information of the government, the primary government, which includes the governmental activities as well as the business-type activities. This is the statements at the accrual method, so if you're used to looking at commercial statements, that would be on a full accrual method. Also included is the fund-level statements. The fund-level statements are at a modified accrual basis, and so that would be when you are used to looking at the general fund, capital projects, debt service fund, that would be at that level. Also, within the statements, at the very back is the statistical section. The statistical section is going to have a 10-year spread, which you can show comparative information. That comparative information is going to include net position, also operating statistics, demographics, and everything has a lot of good information with regards to the city over a 10-year span. The one difference from previous year within this statement is going to be the implementation of GASB 75. This was a requirement to all cities that have another post-employment benefit plan and were required to implement that. It did result in a restatement of prior year net position, and there's information with regards to that restatement included in the financial statements. It's located in the note disclosure. And so if you're in note 14, which is page 56 of the statement, it goes through that net position has been decreased by $258,000 for the governmental activities, and then for business-type activities, it's decreased $32,000. As I noted, this was a requirement for all cities, and what's happening is the liability associated with the TMRS Supplemental Death Benefits Plan. TMRS gets GRS, which is an actuary to perform an actuarial report over this plan. They determine the liability associated with each city, member city within the Supplemental Death Benefits Plan, and that information is provided to the city. That is then placed on the financial, the face of the financial statements as a liability. That was previously not the case. So that's new this year. That's the only new accounting principle that was incurred during this audit. Everything else is consistent from prior years. But I'll open it up to you all if you have any questions specific to the audit or to the information included in the comprehensive annual financial report.
Questions? Questions? You got a couple?
Just one really related to that note 14. Just so I'm clear, it's about a $280,000 liability against the FY18 budget. Is that right? So...
This is going to be at the government-wide level, so it's not at the fund level. So the government-wide statements are not going to be reflective of the general fund budget, so it is at the government-wide level. It's not on the general fund, or it would be on the enterprise fund, but not on the general fund side.
So the liability would not be reflected in the budget itself?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer, I had a couple of questions. On page 11, I don't know if you want to put there, talking about capital assets, and I just want to understand this, we list major capital asset events during the year. And my question is how we define a capital asset, because we're talking about a crosswalk. A crosswalk is a capital asset? How does that work?
It's considered to be a capital asset because it's an infrastructure item, so it does meet anything outside, so a repair or maintenance item, that would be outside of these, but anything, a road, a walk that you can walk on.
Crosswalk, okay.
Yep, it meets the definition of a capital asset.
I was just curious. I saw that and thought that was odd. Thank you.
Yeah.
What else did I have? Oh, and on page, just page five, the financial highlights, and I didn't want to stop you while you were going. There's two amounts listed. One is $17.7 million for unrestricted net assets, and the other is $10.7 million for unassigned. Would you just explain the difference between those two, so I'm clear?
Okay.
Page five.
Okay. The $17 million is going to encompass the government as a whole, and that's unrestricted, so there's no donor restrictions, debt payment restrictions, or anything that's associated with that. But that is going to include everything, the city as a whole, but the $10.7 is unassigned with regards to the governmental funds themselves. That's the general fund, debt service fund, capital projects funds, and all the other governmental funds, which is going to be like the donor, I mean donations fund, the police fund, those. So it's outside of the enterprise fund.
But the $17 million includes the enterprise fund.
Enterprise, yeah.
Oh, that's, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. All right. Any other questions? Any other issues, questions? And do we take an action on this item? I forget. No?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just one comment. Would like to thank staff, particularly Kim Quinn. So the annual audit is a colossal undertaking. Our friends ask for a lot of information, as they should. There's a lot of random tests, and Kim has done a great job. You know, you heard the good results of the audit, so we have a good team in place.
Right. And one other thing I want to point out is during the course of the audit, we're not only looking at the numbers located in this statement, but also the internal controls that encompass the preparation of this information. And so if there were any issues with regards to internal controls, that would be brought to this council, and there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that were associated with internal controls as well. And I would like to also thank Kim for that, because, you know, Weaver does a lot of city audits. Me, myself, I do quite a few, and this is probably one of the most prepared finance departments that we, you know, deal with. So I want to thank Kim for that.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks to Kim and the whole staff for this. It's great work.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Item number six, consideration action regarding resolution 2019-2, calling a general election to be held May 4th for the offices of place, council place one, place three, and place five. For that, City Secretary Janice England.
Okay. Resolution number 2019-02 calls a general election to be held on Saturday, May the 4th, 2019. The offices on the ballot will be council place one, council place three, and council place five. All of these, as you know, are three-year terms. The only action tonight is to call the election, which is what the resolution does. Later on, we'll approve a contract with Tarrant County to handle the election ballots and that things for us, but tonight we just need to call the election.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution number 2019-02 as presented.
Valerie's second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed or unopposed? Item number six, moving to item, item number seven, consideration action regarding ordinance 2019-1, calling a special election to be held May 4th, 2019, to determine whether voters of the city of Saginaw desire to continue the sales and use tax for street maintenance for the city. And for that, City Secretary Janice England.
Okay. Just a little bit of background on this. In 2001, the legislature passed House Bill 445 that allowed cities with voter approval to dedicate a portion of their local sales tax rate to street maintenance and repairs. Sales tax may only be used to maintain and repair existing municipal streets. Saginaw voters approved the street maintenance sales tax in May of 2007. The tax expires every four years after it takes effect unless the voters reauthorize it. It was reauthorized by voters in 2011 and 2015. Ordinance number 2019-01 calls a special election to be held also on May the 4th for the voters to consider the reauthorization of the sales and use tax for the street maintenance. So we just need to take action tonight to call that election.
Just remind me, how much was in that fund? How much did we collect last year? My brain says 260, 280,000, or is it more than that? 300? Okay. And this went for specifically what last year in our last budget? I recall a few of the projects, but I want to remember what all we used for 24.
So it's limited to, City Attorney can correct me if, here, it's limited to maintenance related to existing streets when the tax was authorized or reauthorized. So this funds street rehabs, overlays. I believe this year, our project, Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, like Who Wants to be a Millionaire, phone a friend. I'm trying to think. Is it Fairmont that goes by Miller Milling? I think that's our reconstruction, one of our big projects. We could potentially fund design for future overlay projects or reconstructions of existing streets with this dedicated money.
Right. We had a number of streets, north and south Saginaw, and there were some industrial, including Fairmont, which still hadn't constructed because we're waiting for Miller to complete their work, so, but those were the interlocals that we usually have with Tarrant County to do that work, where we pay for the materials, they provide labor, equipment, et cetera. So there is a balance there that we're looking for some opportunities to use. East McLaurie comes to mind. There might be potential to use some of those funds in the near term to do some improvements on there to increase the life of that pavement, so.
One more question.
I hate to recall specifically what streets were included in this last year's budget, but...
But part of my question is, we do have plenty of things to do with this money if we reauthorize this.
Yes, we do.
That's what I thought. I thought there was no shortage of opportunities for this.
No, there's not.
Okay. Questions, council? Questions? Yes, sir.
Gabe, Gabe or Rick, I don't know who would answer this. Can we use that for curbs and sidewalks as well?
I believe, I haven't seen the covenants in the election, but to me, that's, would be ineligible expense, anything that's street related, street maintenance.
We've talked about before, because just maintaining sidewalks and curbs is needed.
Right. Maintenance, clearly. Maintenance of sidewalks, I mean, if you, any sidewalks, maybe that's a difference.
Not new ones, but repairing the ones that are out there.
It's the entire width of the right-of-way. It's eligible.
So, Mr. Mayor, just want to, the annual amount is closer to 400,000, and what we have budgeted for FY19 is about 850-some thousand. We have sidewalk replacement as a portion of that. The largest outlay is the reconstruction, like Rick mentioned, for Fairmont there, which we're waiting for Miller Milling to complete.
Other questions, council? Other questions, sir? I like what, just going over this, talking about the sales tax, the total sales tax, you know, it bears repeating, you know, we collect 8.25% sales tax. Of that, the state gets 6.25. So six and a quarter immediately goes to the state. That alone leaves the city 2%. Of the cities, too, 1 cent goes in the general fund, an eighth of a cent goes to this street maintenance we're talking about, 3/8 is dedicated to the crime control and prevention district, and a half cent is dedicated to reduction of property taxes. So we're using that money for good things, and part of this is not, this is not only all Saginaw folks, this is anybody that comes in town to eat, buy gas, whatever, so it's a good use of revenue, and I think this street maintenance tax has done us good things. I would like to continue it. What does the rest of the council think?
I think so.
Any other questions?
I think it's a win-win, so.
It's been good for us, and I'm glad we have lots of potential items lined up.
It allows people coming into the city purchasing to help pay for the streets that they're using.
Mm-hmm. You're right.
Takes the burden off our citizens.
A little bit, yeah. All right. Any other discussing questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2019-01, calling a special election to be held on May 4th, 2019, to determine whether the voters of the city of Saginaw desire to continue a sales and use tax for street maintenance in the city.
I'll second.
Valerie's second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Are those opposed? There aren't. Thank you. Thank you, Janice. Item number eight, consideration action regarding ordinance 2019-02, special election for the purpose of submitting to voter multiple propositions to amend the Saginaw Home Rule Charter. For that, City Manager Gabe Ray.
I'm going to pass that to Bren. Sorry, I'm going to pass that to Bren. So we talked about this in a workshop. Betsy Elam from Bren's office has prepared the ballot language, and if there are any questions, please address them in City Attorney.
I don't have a formal presentation. I know you all have worked shop this previously, and your charter review commission has also made recommendations. I'm afraid Betsy couldn't be here this evening, but she's prepared all of the measures in accordance with council's direction at the last meeting, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
All right, council, looking at this red line copy, what questions do you have? Questions, concerns on what we're considering taking to the voters? And this still, no matter what the city council says, this requires voter approval? Bottom line.
It does, and just as a reminder, the deadline to call the charter election is February 15th, so we have 10 days. If there are any significant changes, we would need to call a special meeting in order to timely call the charter election.
Now, are we, how are we going to lay this out? Will this be one special, one item on the ballot, or will this be multiple items?
It will be multiple propositions, and those propositions are enumerated. Strangely enough, during the last legislative session, the Texas Legislature mandated that local elections be numbered with, be styled with letters, and statewide measures be done with numbers. So you'll notice that these are lettered propositions and not numbered propositions.
Okay. Mayor, go ahead.
And I just wanted to, for the, to let the, anybody who's listening and the people here tonight, when this does come up for a vote, there's 12 propositions, I believe, and, you know, you could vote for two of them, you could vote for 10 of them, you could vote for none of them, you could vote for all of them. It's not a yes or no for the whole 12. You can pick and choose.
Good point. Very good.
Am I counting wrong, 17?
Whatever the letter Q is.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. More than 17.
Yeah, there's 17 of them, but...
Okay.
They're listed.
Oh, I do have another question.
Go ahead.
Will voters be able to come to City Hall and look at these propositions and try to make up their mind ahead of time, so they won't be trying to figure this out right when they're voting? Will that be available? And will you publicize that, so people will know?
So, council member, I'm not an attorney, nor have I ever claimed to be, but I've talked with Bren about maybe holding a series of town hall meetings where we can have Betsy or someone from Bren's office on hand to address questions directly from the public, and we will notify the ballot language as we're required, you know, put reminders in the utility bills, that sort of thing, but I would like to have a public meeting where a resident can come and understand what's being asked of the voter.
And just as a reminder as well, state law, state election law prohibits advocating for or against a measure using public funds, so the information that is disseminated by the city through the website, et cetera, now that doesn't apply to you all individually discussing it on social media or with your constituents, but that information that comes from the city, sponsored by the city, is required to be factual and not persuasive.
And Mayor, do you think it's important that the people understand that the charter hasn't been revised in 30 years? That's why we have 17 items to vote on?
It's very important. 1988 was when I believe it was created, and so it is, and a lot of it was, the changes were made to keep up with state law. We were required to make several of them because the state laws changed in 30 years, and the town has grown, so you're right, Cindy. We were 5,000 or so when this was chartered, and now we're 23,000 some odd, so it's just a bigger city. Things have changed, so you're right, Cindy. Many things. So other questions, concerns about this charter? I do, any other things, council? I do have one person wants to speak. Please, Ms. Lakey, want to speak on this item? This is number eight, please. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I read through the charter propositions, and I just want to say, I don't understand just from reading the propositions. It makes no sense to me, and since I don't understand it, if I were just in the voting booth, I would have to vote no, because I don't understand what you're asking me to do. So it either needs to be better explanation, or, I'm glad to hear Gabe saying that he wants to have a forum where people can ask questions, because you really need to ask questions about this. I listened to your discussion of the changes of the city charter, and I, I understand what you were talking about there, but if I'm in the voting booth and I'm just reading these, it doesn't make sense to me. Like on Proposition D, it looks to me like it has two different questions, like can the city council appoint, or do, do they have a choice of, or do, I want them to have a special election? Is that my choice? But I think for council vacancies, it's really saying that you have a choice of either appointing or calling an election. So it doesn't seem real clear, and on Proposition E, about the city council meetings, quorum and duties, it seems to me like that's six questions. So if I agree with one, but I, if I don't agree with one of those there, I have to vote no, but I may agree with the other five. So to me, this is just not real clear, so I'd like to have maybe some better explanation, because not everyone is going to come to an event where you explain things to them. They're, they're going to go in the booth, and they're going to be confused, and I'd hate for all of them to be voted no and waste our time, waste our money, because I know you guys have put a lot of work into it, I know the committee put a lot of work into it, so I would really like everyone just to understand when they go into the voting booth, what they're voting for, what you're asking them for. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Wise words. Yes, sir.
In regards to Ms. Lakey's comments, when we post, once the council has approved the ordinance calling for the charter election, and we post the charter propositions, we'll also post the redlined copy of the charter with the additions, deletions, and changes, which will make it much easier to understand than just trying to read the propositions. What they're referencing is this document.
And voting booth?
It'll be, it'll be online, and you can look at it before you go to the voting booth, so.
But do you think everyone will vote?
That's up to them, but the information will be available.
Could they be more English, please, too? Or we can...
We'd be happy to explain any of it if y'all come talk to us.
Well, I know part of it is, and I don't want to blame anybody, but this is written by a lawyer. but this is written by a lawyer, and it is. But, and that's not meant to be direct. It has to be. There's certain legal language you have to follow. It's above my pay grade, but it is certain things for state law we have to follow. Some of the language is prescribed. We don't have a choice.
We really don't. I mean, we have to write the propositions as a question, that the answer, and the answer has to be yes or no. So we could have, and that is a call of the council, some of these multi-part measures, we are allowed to group similar topics together as a single proposition. But as we discussed, we already have 17. So if we broke out every single item that could otherwise be clustered together, we might have 50 or so measures.
And nobody would read that.
Overwhelming in another sense. So, but I agree. I mean, state law unfortunately requires that we pose these propositions as single yes or no questions, and that's why they're awkwardly worded. And we're not allowed to include an explanation in the proposition as to why we're doing it.
Bren, help me with the terms. When we did this initially, 1988, we went from a standard rule?
General law.
General rule, okay. And we went from that type government into a.
Home rule.
Home rule. And in order to do that, we had to pass that entire document. So it was even more detailed and more difficult to make that decision. And everyone had to do their homework. It's just part of the responsibility of voting. If you don't do your homework, you don't do justice by voting. So you have to do your homework to see what you're voting for.
And the other thing.
Go ahead, Cindy.
One of the other points, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we could break this up into two different elections, because there is so many. But you can't do it two years consecutively.
You have to have a two-year waiting period between charter elections, whether measures pass or not.
But the city staff will help you understand.
Yeah.
I know.
And you bring up an excellent point. I mean, y'all are here all the time. Y'all are very well informed, but not everybody is. So, and you're right. We have not, we need to do a better job. And hopefully, as Gabe mentioned, we'll do a town hall. We'll get some more discussion, get some more information out there. But we need to. You're right. Throwing it out as it is right now is not enough. I think you're right. Absolutely right.
And I have a suggestion. The city charter is available for any resident to get a copy of. Right, Janice? And so if somebody did want to do their homework, I find it much easier to have the city charter in my hand and look, okay, what article, what number are you talking about? And then read that. And then it would be easier to understand, okay, how are they wanting to change this? I think that's easier than looking at all of these redlines. If anybody wants to take that suggestion.
So state law is going to supersede the charter. So in instances where we are amending, proposing to amend the charter to be consistent with state law, it's more of a housekeeping edit than anything else.
Can we put that in our proposals, that this particular item is to bring us in line with state law? Would that help?
Well, I think we can include that in our explanation. I would, I'd be concerned about rewriting the propositions here during the meeting. Because I'd want to make sure.
At some point, if we can just clarify that to the citizens, that this.
We can certainly do that.
Is because we're having to.
Absolutely.
Clear up state law requirements.
Absolutely.
And that's what a majority of, a lot of these are.
Proposition K says that to comply with state law. There's several of them in here that do have that statement at the end of the proposition.
Mr. Mayor, just to make one thing clear, you know, when we have these meetings in the future, to emphasize Bren's point, staff doesn't advocate. So I don't even know that staff would be on hand. That's more of, you know, understanding from the attorney to verify what the language means. So we provide the information. Voters make the decision.
And let's be clear, if these don't pass, the city will not shut down. We won't have to close the doors or anything. But most of, a lot of this cleanup stuff, it just needs to be done. It hasn't been touched in 30 years. It makes sense that we need to bite the bullet. And the Charter Committee did a great job, spent a lot of time on this. I think there's been over six months working on this. So it's good to move this forward. Any other questions from counsel? Any other discussions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we consider an action regarding ordinance number 2019-03, adding new articles, oh, sorry, that's the wrong one.
O2.
2019-02, calling a special election to be held on May 4th, 2019, for the purpose of submitting the voters' multiple propositions to amend the Saginaw Home Rule Charter.
Second.
Second. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Are those opposed? There aren't. All right, Janice, we move forward. And yeah, let's see on when we can get a, some kind of town hall to get some more information out to the voters and get this on the website as well. Good work. And again, pass along our best to the committee for this. I know they have a heck of a, have a good job. Item number nine. Where is it? There it is. Item number nine, consideration action regarding ordinance 2019-3, adding a new Article VII, Smoking in Public Places, to Chapter 42, Health and Sanitation Code for the city, repealing Section 42-2 Smoking as an offender of the code. For that, City Manager Gabe Ray.
Mayor and counsel, the ordinance for your review in action this evening reflects comments from the last time the mayor and council saw this. The specific feedback was that there will, pending your approval, will be a 90-day window for existing businesses who allow smoking to request a permit to continue to do so. Staff believes that there are only two businesses citywide that would be impacted. So we will contact them, make them aware of the ordinance, and nothing further to add. Happy to try to answer any questions if you have them.
Counsel, any questions? No questions? Well, this is a huge step forward. I'm very glad that we're doing this. I'm a big advocate of this. I'm, I think it's a public health issue that we need to address. And I'm glad we're gonna give the businesses some options here, but I'm also glad we're gonna move forward with this for all. And this will, if I'm correct, this will affect any new businesses as well? They'll be prohibited from smoking, any new businesses, from here into the future? Okay. Excellent. All right. If no other questions, then I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd be glad to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2019-03 for our article, adding Article VII, Smoking in Public Places, to our Chapter 42 Health and Sanitation of the city code.
Thank you, David.
And repealing Section 42-2.
Charlie, second? Charlie, second that? All right, thank you, sir. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? There is none? Excellent. Let's move forward on that one. Good deal. All right, item number, where are we? Item number 10, consideration action regarding request for reimbursement of legal fees from Councilmember Patrick Farr related to the illegal defense of inquiry by Tarrant County District Attorney. For that, City Attorney Bren Meredith.
Yes, Mayor and counsel. You all have received a copy of Councilmember Farr's private attorney's request for reimbursement for legal fees. I know Councilmember Farr is here and understand, is perhaps willing to answer questions regarding this matter. But this stems from participation in a zoning ordinance matter, the overlay district matter in particular, and an inquiry by the Tarrant County District Attorney's Office with regard to that participation in action. My understanding is that that matter is not concluded in a conviction. And so there are several Attorney General opinions that provide that with respect to a member of council that has undergone a criminal inquiry, the, if the inquiry results in a conviction, the city is not permitted to use public funds to reimburse or fund the legal expenses associated with that defense. However, if the inquiry is resolved in any other manner, the council may reimburse the legal fees incurred by the council member in question. And so the standard, and let me pull it up for you. The standard in deliberating and determining whether or not to approve the discretionary award of attorney's fees upon request is whether the actions that were investigated were done in a bona fide performance of official duties, and that a public interest, rather than a private interest of the individual officer, is served by the expenditure of those public funds. And so that is the legal standard. I had a conversation with Mr. Farr's attorney today, and I explained that, you know, it is my opinion that it is entirely discretionary, and that those are the two elements of the standard that the council needs to evaluate. And you have discretion in terms of whether or not to approve that reimbursement. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Now, I understand, are we gonna have some folks gonna abstain from this discussion or from the vote, or what is the plan for that?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Now, Patrick, are you gonna abstain from discussion or vote or?
Abstaining from the vote. But I will, I will answer questions if needed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And I will add the Attorney General opinion, and I spoke with Mr. Farr's attorney about this. And the Attorney General opinion that I referenced does provide that the requesting council member is prohibited from taking action on the request for reimbursement. It does not include a prohibition on deliberating or participating. This is not a Chapter 171 legal conflict of interest. This is, this simply has to do with public policy and whether or not it's appropriate to take action on your own request.
Thank you, Bren. Valerie, do you have something you want to?
I do. I wanted to explain the reason why I contacted the District Attorney Office, and I inquired about you not recusing yourself on the ordinance 2018-24 Overlay District at the December 18th meeting. When you were elected as a council member, we were all told, if there is an item on the agenda that relates to you owning property, and the appearance of conflict of interest is present, you should recuse ourselves. One of the ways we are informed that it can be, is an item to recuse ourselves is by the public works sending us a letter of notification, which I received one, and I'm pretty sure you did too. Every time that my property has been involved, the city managers, past and present, have notified me that I should think about recusing myself and signing a conflict of interest so the citizens know that I'm doing what is in the best interest of our city. They probably did that for you also, because you own a property and a business in the city. The fact is, on February 20th, 2018, you recused yourself on the public hearing 0218-14, which was a request for the approval of amended plat for Lot 5R Block 8, original town of Saginaw, being a replat of lots 5 through 9, Block 8, original town of Saginaw, commonly known as 116 through 128 Belmont Street, which is just a few lots from your property and business. Another fact is that in the past, on several occasions, you have let the council and the public know that you have more knowledge than the city manager, our finance department, our city engineers, and even our city attorney on some manners. Saying that, we are not transparent. But you're the one that have cost the taxpayers money for staff hours on repeated items, and then having to have special people come and repeat things such as the truth in taxation. Your social media page is your opinion, and you stated that on your page. But when you post some items that are not the whole facts, the rest of the council members can't post on it and correct infractions that you posted, because then it can become a quorum, and that's illegal. In my opinion, I feel that you should have known to recuse yourself from this matter. It is not fair to our citizens that you only follow the law when it suits you. It should be straight across the board, and everyone, including you, should follow the law at all times. I know that when someone doesn't do exactly as they are supposed to do by your standards, and if that shoe was on the other foot, you would do exactly what I did. When I called the district attorney, all I did was inquire. And I just felt like you needed to know that.
Thank you, Valerie. Excellent. All right. I don't want to turn this into any kind of an inquisition. I just want to answer some questions, discuss this, and then move forward. So any discussions, any questions for folks on the council have?
I have one question.
Cindy, go ahead.
We received copies of two letters from your attorney, one asking for $4,500, the other one asking for $4,060. It was surprising to me that the second one was lower than the first, but your attorney was stating that he's still incurring charges. But neither one of these came with an itemized description of charges. And I find it very difficult to even consider paying this carte blanche with no indication how that money was charged to you, and then expect the city to pay for it.
You want to respond?
I'm sorry, was that a question? Are you asking that I provide an itemized list? I can certainly do that.
No, I was just wondering why that wasn't provided up front.
That is attorney-client privilege. But if you're asking for it, I'm happy to release my attorney to release that information to Bren.
Okay.
Are there any other discussions, any other questions? Mary, go ahead.
I've given a lot of thought to this issue, and I just asked myself what I would do if I found myself in the same position. And if I made a decision not to recuse myself from an issue that would either give the appearance that I was, that I had a vested interest in that, or if in fact I did have a vested interest in that, I would recuse myself. But if I felt so strongly about the issue that I did not recuse myself, I would then be prepared to, on my own, deal with any consequences that would arise from that decision. Therefore, I would not ever ask the city to repay any attorney's fees that I would accrue because of that.
Thank you, Mary. Any other questions, concerns, discussion? And following Mary's point, I have a hard time asking the citizens to pay this. I think it's not a good use of public funds. I could not support something as this based on an issue, a decision made by a council member that was against their, our city attorney's advice. So I do not feel we could ask to.
I do have to interrupt there.
Can I finish, please? Thank you. And I just don't think it's appropriate for those reasons. It's not a personal issue. It's a use of taxpayer funds. And that's how I feel about this issue.
So the characterization of me acting against the city attorney's recommendation is false, flat-out false. I was asked to contact the city attorney if I had any questions, and I certainly did. The city attorney and I had a very detailed conversation about what was a conflict of interest and what was not a conflict of interest. I did explain to the city attorney that I was prepared to fill out a conflict of interest statement and to make a statement in public as to why I believe there was not a conflict of interest. Contrary to that, the city attorney said that if I did not believe that there was a conflict of interest, that I should not declare one. That is precisely what was said. I followed the city attorney's advice.
That is correct. What I advised him was, if he felt that he did not have a conflict of interest, it would be difficult and place him in a difficult position if he then declared one and then participated in the discussion and the vote. Because signing it is a declaration that you have a conflict of interest. And so in, out of an abundance of caution, the advice was, you should not declare under your signature that you have a legal conflict of interest and then participate as if you didn't. That could be used against you. And if the, and I, again, I don't, I don't want to get into the weeds here. But, you know, I always advise, it is a fact question, okay? There's no way I can predict, and I tell all of you this, there's no way I can predict or foreclose for you the ultimate outcome of any matter. But the recommendation is, if you own property within the area or within 200 feet of the area, it is, it is. if you own property within the area or within 200 feet of the area, it is possible that the District Attorney's Office, which is the overseeing agency, could conclude that the action that you participate in could have a special economic effect on you that is different from that of the general public, and that is the standard in the statute.
Thank you, Brett.
Sure.
Can I say something else?
I got it.
Sure.
This is from TMS or TML about the conflict of interest, and right here it says, "A public official who has such an interest is required to file before a vote or decision on any matter involving the business entity or real property, an affidavit with the city's official record keeper stating the nature and extent of the interest. In addition, a public official is required to abstain from further participation in the matter." You called for it to be tabled, and you voted on it, and you did not tell anybody that you owned property there.
There is no conflict of interest. The DA has determined that.
Haven't you since filled out a conflict of interest form and said you would abstain?
I have not filled out a conflict of interest form, and I have stated that I would abstain just to avoid this kind of fight.
Charlie, do you have something? Do you have a question, Charlie?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bren, this is really for you. Is it a habit of the city attorney to tell a council member or council members, you have a conflict of interest, you need to recuse yourself, or do you suggest there could be and you may need to go?
I suggest that there could be and you may need to. And I've said this to you all in the past. I work for you, you all don't work for me, so it's not my job to order you to do anything. I give advice, and it doesn't hurt my feelings if you don't take it. And Patrick and I have had this conversation about other matters as well. I attempt to respectfully provide my advice based on my experience, and then it's certainly each of your decisions individually, especially when it involves you personally. There are very few matters under state law wherein there is statutorily prescribed criminal liability, and so it's sort of, my advice is heightened urgency when I deliver it with respect to those matters. However, it is your individual decision whether to accept it, and I certainly could be wrong, I've been wrong in the past. I don't claim to know what's in the mind of the District Attorney's Office, but that is correct. That's a correct assessment of my role in the process.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other questions, any other discussion? Mary, go ahead.
I just feel like it might help a little bit for me to talk about a situation that I faced similar. I was, I received the notification, I'm within 200 feet of an item that came before the city a month or two ago. I did not ask for anybody's opinion because I knew, simply by receiving that letter stating that I am within 200 feet, that right there caused at least the appearance of a conflict of interest. I left the room, filled out the affidavit. I would have liked to have been involved in that conversation because that issue may end up costing me financially and time that I would not like to spend, time and money. And I even had some views on how I thought would be a better way to address this particular ordinance that was being changed. I did not speak to any council member about the fact that I had what could be considered a conflict of interest, and in fact was, and I did not ask anybody how they were going to vote, I did not try to campaign for anything. Nobody knew why I was recusing myself, except perhaps the city manager and one of our staff members. So I'm just saying, we have an obligation to our citizens to bend over backwards to never come close to having a conflict of interest or the appearance of one. And it would have been to my advantage to have taken part in the discussion, in the event that I could sway some of my council members to see my point of view, but I didn't.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate that. All right, we've discussed this pretty thoroughly. Any other questions, or I will entertain a motion if no other?
So I have one more point.
Sure.
The matter involving the plat, conversation between Bren and I before the meeting, I asked specifically if this was a statutory conflict of interest based upon the 200-foot notice. He did clearly state to me that since it was not involving a plat, the statutory 200-foot rule does not apply, that it is fact-based. That is why I believed that there was not a legitimate conflict of interest. The business is not my primary source of income, and I own debt in that business, so there is absolutely no benefit to me. This was conveyed to the attorney. What the matter was that we were discussing affected 19 businesses on the Boulevard. It was a huge proposition, and whether or not I have property 200 feet away from it mattered not to me, because it was a very important decision for our community, and I thought that participating in that conversation far outweighed some nebulous idea that I might have a conflict of interest.
All right, I will, Mary, would you like to say something?
And... I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought.
If it comes back to you, let us know. Any other questions, any other concerns? If there aren't, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we deny payment to Mr. Farr.
All right, thank you, Charlie. Is there a second?
Second.
Mary, a second? All right, I believe there will be two abstains, abstentions. So we repeat the motion, Charlie, just to make sure we're all clear. We've got a first and a second. So the motion is to deny, Charlie?
To deny, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on.
That is item 10, item 11.
Oops, I'm off. Item 11, Executive Session. We don't have, we have, A pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074 Personnel Matters, City Manager Discussion. We will excuse ourselves into Executive Session at 6:57. We will return to adjournment.[1062.83]
Well, I like that. He literally moved.
So are you just kidding?
Yeah, okay. Oh, my word, you guys don't know me. Well, now, is she single? I'm sure she should need to be. Well, that's five dollars.
I was like, I didn't want you to ask me. It is a lot of fun. Oh, my God. And he told me, and I'm thinking all the exciting things.
Yeah, not that, not that. I started from language.
I was very impressed by the fun.
Well, I think so much.
I was very, uh...
I noticed your girlfriend, um, when I was talking to her.
I feel like...
Just kidding. I mean, those are the answers.
Oh, he was... I can believe it, that she was working for us. Her, her teacher, she said, I was at school, and then she comes out. She's got twenty years. I said, okay, you're all just, you don't feel it, but it's in there.
We were three of us.
And so we did that. I told them, I was... And I said, so... Well, I think... I don't know who they... They can't have one, 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 one. I guess what it is, she was like, like, my, 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 you know, but, you know, I said, you know, what? You know, it's... I mean, the reader, you say the same thing. Well, I, I tell them, it, it's hard to say, I'm like, we can't get it, so, so, I guess, but that's the only time you really start thinking. And I sort of...
I'm trying to hold, I'm trying to hold, hold it.
I would say the whatever, but I, I, I was doing, I was getting behind, and I go to the next room, so, but I'm not...
I had a big, and I said, and I don't care if, you know, to catch you. I, I don't know if it was getting us in the problem. Man, I understand the fact you're too angry, but I go out with you here, I have your own, and that's an issue. So that's a way to make it should be done. Hey, give him long, but thanks. How many? They, well, I, I call every time, I mean, I've been so just wanting to get in the conference, I mean, uh,
That's his little baby, he can do whatever he wants. And I said, I'm not doing that. And I said, it doesn't make sense. This man, I said, you don't get a big birthday thing with him. He said, alright. I said, so you wanna keep watching? You're forcing you. She said, alright. So that's what they did. And I'm like, had to come very first and leave it. I'm here for that. And I was like, I was like, so what is that thing I can sell you on different? So what was the chief rationale? And swap show? Is that something, is that something you buy now? I didn't have that. About what I get was pretty hard. Uh, what it is, is to keep you from developing too close friendships. And so I, I was over girl for four years. And then we were supposed to swap. And uh, so we did. And part of the reason for the swap, we had Karen, she runs dispatch. And we were getting all kinds of trouble. Derek, who was always on my, Carl would do it. We wouldn't, we needed him. And she said, I need you to fix this. And she, Carl's new person. And that's part of how I worked it, so you know what I mean? And so I went in. First week I was there, I hurt her. Second week ruined her up. Third week said, I have to do this again, you're not gonna do it, understand? And she said, yeah, why are you such an asshole? I said, I'm not an asshole, see, you're gonna be your fucking job, you know what I'm saying? And her, I mean, I'm great now. But first she didn't, I didn't get her off. But I was, I was holding her down. And uh, did, did the same thing. See, I had to, we called some people kind of over there into the gym, so the retirement chief and that. He's a very good, he's obvious, he's, he can help us with the money. This gentleman kind of, one of the last, second one, he's here. But we'll do that on hand. Oh, oh, we don't want this one. He, or was it, he'll crack shit up, everything on. Sheldon, he hates him. But you can't even diss him close to him. He has not left the building in three years. He comes in, and he sits in his office, and he works on lesson plans for his classes, and he sits. And then if you look across the hall, next office, office, there's four of them. So I got five staffs inside the building. Nobody's supervising, Jack Sheldon, sure. And Chief Mayne says something about it, you do it, and Carl, Carl will fix it. And Chief wouldn't make him fix it, because as, as the chief said, I, Jim actually asked. Jim, like, what's that, this little question for me? Uh, Carl, that'll need, so you'll catch it, you'll be honest with me. I just remember that, Carl, I can't explain it, but then. And Chief Mayne, I'm helping you, yeah? I really wish when I was on the street, I would have had a boss on Carl, if he won't diss me. And that is okay, yes. You have to change, you can change that, you know? And he goes, I could, but you, Carl, you have the special right to pardon, I could. And so Chief was suffering from that being too close to the building. And so he worked, he knew what. And then four years came around, it's time to reject that. And Chief said, I'm gonna reject that, and I'm gonna back up, so. But Carl was keeping the swap, he didn't want to go out, so. It sounded like Carl or Carl's like, I might have heard somebody on sports show. And so, now we're here, six and a half. And Carl has all kinds of issues, dark points, open. No, I don't know. I see that. We got people coming in, like, for about a hundred a month. I see, it's very many, and I don't know. I tell you, when I did that, uh, turn the class through shit. I'm like, dude, it's six o'clock. Yeah. Come on, the shit starts, I said, you just got here. I said, probably, 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 there's thirty, not forty-five minutes past here, so other guys only run calls, and then we don't control, and we're like, others. Hold on, let me take these fucking guys over there. If they show up fifteen minutes early and they pay a call, they're putting in thirty minutes? They say, whoa, you're only fifteen minutes early. What about around the, no, we're around, and there's water, my friend. That's crazy, that's crazy. We can drive them out there, we can drive them in, they can't fucking then. But if they make enough work, they came in this early, it's on their fucking ass. She's like, talk about, he was like, six months ago. Dog is a dog, can't have a couple of cars, it's so, it shows. That's a little bit of a problem. He had a little bit of a problem. All the streets over there. She was like, she would not get there, she was on the gas station. So I called the guy, I said, now you're gonna come up. So then my mom and grandma, back yard, so I go back, I just shut the door. And she didn't go back there for a while. She was like, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is my fault. Oh, she's in there, she's on her ass, I can see her, I was like, I can't believe that. Mom, and grandma, the bag, she must have been there since the house, so. So we go in, and you can see, and she, she, she just goes out, she's like, hey. So I called the guy, I said, bring your patrol sets, we'll go right through the door, because we can see her in the back, I said, come in the back. I said, are you ready? You belong, I said, break the door. I'm like, I didn't know, I didn't say it, I was like, fuck her. She don't hurt herself, I mean, she kept going to the glass windows, and I told, told the dog, the windows, I was like, Jack. He wanted, he carried, I asked, do the car, your shit, my fault. My fault, I wanted to make any other person, I see. I said, well, fuck you. He said, I'll make sure of what she does, and I said, so I don't need you. I'm like, I'm like, yeah. I said, Kevin, just make sure you call them in the ground. I don't need you. He's like, oh, man. And I'm like, man, I guess you don't understand this. I said, that's a good shit, that's not a good shit. I mean, you're a fucking police car, you're not gonna do the fucking job, that's what I mean. And so then he's not looking forward to moving on, and Carl's like, he said, he's only trying to position himself about Chief, and some manager, so, but yeah. I told all the sergeants, they wanna come talk to you, what are your expectations? I said, first, if you're in this building, you're wrong. You come to this building, and you're called by dispatch, you come to this building, because you gotta make work, you gotta follow up, otherwise you don't be in the building. You should have shirt, that's what I think you did. Oh, it's, I mean, which I know, I mean, it is, it is, I mean, those guys don't realize what they're talking, and they start looking at the control gas, and they're, oh, they're back. Yeah. So it's like shit, I mean, they're like, it's stupid. Shit was square, that's what I mean, the current problems. And I live in a private, okay? Shit, shit, exactly. That's the problem, so. We were talking, and I said, and I said, if I can get, get sergeants and corporals, we can do this stuff, and shit, we can, example, they have to do this. You think I'm a slut, I said, when you put it there. And he's kind of looked at me, and I said, yes, you talk, very good point. And he's kind of looked at me, and I was just saying, he's like, I hate you. Alright, I mean, this, you, this guy, you know? Don't go sit in the sandwich place, talking to him for thirty hours. Don't go sit over there, and start parking, lying with the shit. Yeah, I know, I know, it's something. But that's all he has. I don't know. And so it's, okay, fuck it, man. Well, I'll pull the structure. And that's, that's part of my health service team, you know? How, how, what's expected, you won't not understand. You got, you, you got a bunch of patrol, gas patrol, their, their bill to learn is, is they're ready to police work. They're ready to consult, school stuff, they're ready to police work. They're ready to police work, and you're ready, we're ready to do this. And there's, I mean, I, I'll tell you, the ones that I talk to, sort of, yes, but, I said, they don't really realize what they're saying to me, that way to me. But yeah, they're like, we just, like, we're ready, we're gonna do police work, we're gonna do real police work, we're gonna do shit. But our sergeants, oh, sergeants, you know, how, um, what was that? I, that's, that's, I, you know? Probably the stats, and your stats are almost identical, for shifts. You wanna criticize her all the time. She doesn't go to die, getting help for the building, then go meet that sergeant. Brandon does pretty good job, you know? Brandon's problem is he's a squirrel. He can't see me on that, he's got a problem with escaping from Peter Hale. She's suffering, she's kind of, she's like, I don't know, she's a horse. She can't hold the night, kind of, the hell with the lie, she's not gonna help you here. He don't wanna be on that, there's no opportunities for him on that. He's gonna be a sergeant, there's no opportunities. So he had to volunteer. And I was talking a lot, and he, I really don't wanna bring back any career division. And so they can't do more circum from ship than I'm gonna do that. And so that way, forces them all to get after me, and different, ships, and see what's going on. We started rotating, we get the captains. Keep two captains over here, one with ten, one captain, two with tens over there. Every six months, we'll start two captains, so, two ships swap, one, so you're at one station for a year, but so. And I wasn't, when Doug said that, I was like, eh, another, you know what? It needs to be that way. And that's what really, really, that's what, that's what. Rolling, rolling, back, learning, ready to retire, but when we did that, moved to back station one. Because it's like, see, that's why, so he just, okay, so Mark wants to retire, he's ready to, after a while. I said, look, so you've been in your position for seven years. I said, Carl's gone, you know, I'm, I'm a senior, senior, and that's the part. Cause everyone look back, and now I feel all, keep going, first step. I said, I guess it works, right? First, first, probably, we're friends, then we are friends. I said, back, I guess someone's trying to do it. I said, you're telling people to do two years, and you expect, I'm gonna leave, I'm out. I said, so, you do the night calendar, that's why I got it, because I had someone trying to do this, and I'm before he decided to do it. And I said, we got Carl's now, okay. So I would have some, seriously, I would, I would go back to Carl. And so Mark, I said, when he asked me this question, I said, why did you even prepare yourself, and do you have a position in this department? And he said, exactly, you're not done, you, you, you know? He didn't put in for a background investigator school. He's been doing this all year, for seven years. He's sent to one early on, he's not requesting any more sense. Close, he put in for a background investigator school. And I'm like, yeah, Mark, 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 I have to do it. Doing it for seven years, and you train, you don't have to do it yet. Now, I'm sure, but this is awesome, this is, this is not a book. I said, they also get their desk order. It is, it is, it is. It, it, what happens, when it comes out, and so, and then, hey, we're passing those, so, I can't, I can't do this, dude. And so, I'm like, fuck, I'm, I'm too busy. What's it do? And I said, well, Mark, I said, this is my problem, if you get all pissed off, I said, so he's coming to the school, and you feel like he's forcing you out? I said, dude, someone must come in this position. He will help you for three days, I'm not helping, he gets it, he's like, and we talked about it four, five times. But it's three days over, dog. And I'm like, maybe you need, you need a plan, Curtis, because other things are gonna happen. I said, I'm telling you, I hope, so you need a plan for the lieutenant's position. Not that everybody has, it's all, there is a writing assignment, you can't not push it, like, periphery stuff, and that's why, whatever it is. And there's a whole presentation, he struggles with the whole presentation, that he's doing. I said, you need a plan, this. He was just working it out, I think, because he shouldn't go. And so here, he can't, he can't, we don't do it. I said, if he wanted opportunity, here's what you do, you don't come, like, Carl. I said, this is your way, and I'm gonna back to Carl. Otherwise, hello? Carl's like, and she, and he, it's awesome, it's awesome. It is not in person, but I have to look out for the best interest of PD. Knowing that you're thinking about retiring as early as October, right? You want that bunch of, your boy, Bishop, and as you're leaving, he was saying, so you retired a couple of years ago? You need to retire, you need to retire. And Mark's getting on, I don't like shit, I, why do I do kind of, what you said, man? Everyone's seeing that, I mean, you're getting up there, and you're, your, Rocky's all good, and you're on, it's fifty percent of your, and one thousand. If, if, he's one of those, he actually fell in, and started by other people. And as soon as he's turned up, he's fucking pissed. And I'm like, yeah, he'll do that for me, you know, he'll come back, well, I, I can't wait, I started doing that, and I said, and I can't wait, you let him, just get your, I said, you're a ten-year guy. I said, you get more air for that shit, you better be able to take, so you can test it. I would, I would, if, 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 we're, if we're all better, it's for, we're, everybody's, well, still, we're not, he's not gonna be in the position, I'm, I'm, I had, he's, he had, uh, those guys will say, that's, you're not a fucking bitch, I'm watching about that. He's like, oh, oh, oh. Yeah, you're on it. Well, it's like, you say that. And I'm, 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 you know? You know, I've been reporting for different guys, and, you know, and some of it is a love-hate relationship, and I know where I stand, but a little, they, from last person. And we were talking one day, and he hears, and he goes, uh, she takes it, she's down. He goes, when you come in at morning? He says, you're a dick tower, shit, so if you, you're a dick, I was like, cool, he goes, she's a bad man, or you're a wife, or father, when you come in, and, cause you come, cause we come at seven, talking morning, and you, he said, we're at the third, he said, you predicted that, I'm like, you're right. And so, ever since he said that, as a product of told me that, I mean, I, I couldn't, the one is like, hey, I mean, but. You know, I just have to think about, you know, just what I said, and I'm like, that's crazy, and then, you're like, did you work for our ass now? Yeah. So you gotta go up for our, you know? You're like, why the fuck you smiling, I think that's crazy, that is right. And then the guy said, I'm gonna fuck you up, and that's what she even did. And he just looks at it, and I said, alright, I said, I'm just, he was in Mark's office, right? Jose's staying at the door, so I come up, and, right, we come to Mark's office, we get a, we kind of touch, little recess there behind the wall. And so I walked up, looked in, and I see a curb, it's built, he looks to see, he's there, I go back to the wall. And I'm like, isn't it just, you know, we got control, you know? He found his, closed it up, get ready to leave, and he starts walking out. Just as he gets to the door, Jose's, Jose says something very violent, and he's striking, and he turned, and he kind of, rah! Get it, cut, Jesus, son of a bitch, and he comes in, and I'm like, okay. Because I have been out my, you know, fucking ten years, I need you, uh, and I said, it's a great guy. So what do you want to, chief, assistant chief, and two attendants? That's my understanding. So the chief has a partner, so specifically, so from, uh, us all, the, the power, that's how, for sure, that would be for the assistant chief. And two attendants, and then now it's on some, I find, it's just, it's just, like, the road, they, it's like, okay, you do what you want to do, you're right, because. Right now, my staff's totally waiting for all, he has been all, but he's present, so, I think, if you're any pressure, you know, and I'm like, not much pressure. He's, he's playing this money, money game on this, and it is a worship, and I'm kind of like, boom! And they're talking, the door, and so, and you're, and you're working on so much stuff, trying to find your next job. Pressure this hard. Then he's, chief is walking, I said, alright. This is the chief, Carl, you're reporting him? Okay. I'm done, and he, he, Carl, I'm gonna go home, but, Carl, that can't, he's a starter, you know? She can't do that, and I'm like, okay, good job. He's trying to build a church, he, he, uh, so, you put a building, uh, as soon as you go on, fucking, I got a little, freaking out, man. He, I don't know about fucking season, I don't need, he needs stickers, he can't make words, you know? So, like, do you, do you walk, do you walk it out? So, prayerless, that's. Yes, it is. I was, I was, I was. Are we seeing the inquiries? No. Oh, my God. He, it's like those two masters, he, the first time he ever did a quarter, I'm like, oh, my gosh, forever, oh, man. And then the next time he comes in, he's a, you know, doing the hot sergeant, new walk, I'm like, I don't give a shit, and then he does a shark. The shark box, or walks apart, like, he's like, yeah. He does that, it's, uh, on a big, funny day, someone's gonna see you, and then you're getting all kinds of trouble, it's underway, and I saw. Well, dude, uh, last Friday, told, uh, rumors, you know? So, sit him off, see where I, watch him that first. Top goes off, system, man, and then, you know, Eon. Why are the cops, you know, calling, critical work, and strange, and, I was like, and I heard y'all go about three days before, and I said, I mean, I finished, I scripted that, what do you walk off, no, yeah, I don't know, do you walk off? It's in, it's, it's all packed in, or, I guess, it's in between, so, and, and Eon.